Okay, welcome everyone. Thank you all for being with us today. So as you know, we have a single item agenda for the full NB cog board to adopt a resolution for funding. And then we'll adjourn that meeting and convene the revolving loan fund committee meeting, which will have a published portion and then we'll enter executive session for normal business discussions on on loan requests. So those will be separate. We'll take separate attendance. So let's see.
All right, well, we'll start the meeting. Right now, it's Wednesday, August twenty fourth, ten A M. And we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Deacon. Thank you. About a roll call.
From the city of Banff, America City.
Present.
From the town of Beacon Falls, Mr. Przansky.
Present.
Thank you. From the town of Bethlehem, first elect authority.
Present.
Do we have the mayor of Bristol, Mayor Kajano? I don't believe we have any, I don't believe we have anyone from the town of Cheshire today. From the city of Derby, we have Mayor Zeke. From the town of Middlebury, first select in St. John.
Here.
From the borough of Nogatuck, we have Mayor Hess.
Here.
From the town of Oxford, first select in Temple.
Here.
The town of Plymouth, Mayor Kilduff.
Here.
Mayor Chatfield let us know he couldn't join us today. Do we have first select woman Dragonis with us? Merrill already is expected in person, but he's not here yet. Thomas Southbury, first left mental. Okay. From the town of Thomaston, first like a month, I'm here, sure. From the city of Waterbury Chairman.
Up all the way I can go. Oh, boy.
Do we have anyone? From the woke at Mayor Dunn. And we are joined from the town of Woodbury by first select woman Parkinson. Who can't hear us, but we can hear her.
Short meeting, but this is ludicrous. And I don't know.
Richard, watch and mute her. Okay. You have a form present.
Yeah, you're all right.
For a present and departing from our normal practice, we will not have slides or presentations. This is just a a single item. Everybody should have received regular mail and email.
Yeah, very cool. On a agenda one C public comment, anyone here from the public who would like to address us? Anyone here from the public?
We did not receive any requests in advance from members of the public.
Agenda two authorization of NB cog executive director Rick Dunn to execute and deliver the O P M notice of grant award for F Y third twenty three regional service grant. Go ahead, Rick.
So this is your, this is our normal state funding portion. O P M just got us the grant. Documentation and notice of grant award, which we need to execute. We need to adopt a resolution in order to do so. They gave us thirty days from the day they sent it, which meant that we were two days short of our regular meeting in September. So we're, that's why we had to hold this meeting today. But it's it's our normal grant award by formula. It is still a reduced amount from the change in formula two years ago. We're unsuccessful in getting that restored, but it's got a balanced budget.
Move resolution, NB cog resolution two oh two three dash oh one.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. About some discussion, any discussion, folks? There are none. All in favor say aye. Oppose, abstain, motion passes. Right? Any, any? Item agenda three is other. Anyone have anything for other?
Yeah, I have a question about Mayor Hess. I noticed that there's a bridge behind. Is that the Nogatuck River?
I told you we missed you, George. I got an email from the Attorney General's Office. That twenty plus or minus towns have not signed up to receive the first installment of the opioid settlements. If you guys are one of those twenty, I really apologize. I didn't get a chance to look at them. But if you haven't gotten a payment for opioids and you'd like to get a payment, then you just need to contact my office and or C C M. And we'll get you registered for your portal assignment. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions on that, folks?
Well, okay.
All right, great. Unless anybody has anything other than other. We'll let you go and we really appreciate you getting on and giving us a quorum so we can get this administrative, but I'm done. Okay, everybody?
All right.
Mayor, all right, enjoy, enjoy.
Mayor Hess, make sure you stay. You're on the next. Thank you, sir.
How about Steve Sorty? He's on that team, isn't he?
No, this is revolving one.
Oh, okay.
Committee.
Okay.
Everyone's welcome to stay.
You need a motion to withdraw?
We do.
Motion to withdraw.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks again, everyone.
Sign me up in the portal. I thought I had done so, but I haven't received a statement, so I must have missed something.
That's okay. Around there. I just, it was so quick. I didn't get a chance to, but I just forward.
So folks, I just want to know, I know the meeting is adjourned, the regular meeting is special meeting of the of the full board was adjourned, but we did have first select woman Amory Dragonis on the call as well as William Agresta, who's the alternate from Woodbury was also on the call. And was there anyone else we missed? I don't think so. So in a second, as soon as we get settled, we're going to move into America will call the revolving long time committee meeting to order. Same routine, we'll have a public comment. And then review of the finance reports and then we'll move into an exec executive session to receive the underwriting report for Waters Way loan in Torrington. And then consideration of an application from Norwich for three thirty seven, three forty one, then three fifty one, three fifty three Main Street where I have a number of people on the call today from working. Is it the town of Norwich? Yeah. Yeah, not my region. And then we'll have some update on the program. Progress from Ricardo at the end. So that's what we have in mind today. We will, I have to switch to Richard, right? Am I sharing a screen? We'll just note that we're joined by Earl Randall from Capital for Change. Earl will give the underwriting report for the Waters Way loan application and executive session. And then, and once we get through with approval of minutes from March third, we will move into executive session. So it'll just be the members of the R L F and staff and one by Earl to join us very bad. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to try and do what I normally don't do, which is share my screen. Now, okay. We're ready.
So commence the meeting. Should we do the pledge again?
You may if you like.
Why not? Real very patriotic. Go ahead, see. Let's get into the flag of the United States.
Roll call. Yeah, roll call. I'm all over the place. This is what happens when I'm in Turkey. For the revolving loan fund committee of the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments, we have Mayor Neil O'Leary.
There.
Mayor already has not joined us unless he's on the, is he that phone number that joined us? Mayor already, are you with us? No. First like my mom.
Here.
Mayor Hess.
Here.
And Mary Zeke.
Here.
Merrill already has driven.
There he is. Good morning. Morning, both. Morning, it's helping you brought a little subway grinder with you.
I brought my boots and my bucket to shovel you guys out. Did you get four inches of rain? Is that true? We didn't get anything, right? Went right around.
Four inches of rain, I mean.
I was almost going to call you, but I said.
It was, it was amazing. We have some flooding, but it wasn't as bad as I thought it would be.
Okay, there is a quorum present for meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay, again, anyone here from the public who would like to address the revolving loan committee?
Good morning. Go ahead, go ahead, John. Go ahead, John.
Thank you. This is John Salomon. I'm the city manager of the city of Norwich. I have with with me are a team that is working on the downtown project for the Y M C A. And that is Dan Dinesca, his assistant planner for the city, the end of roads, the city planner. Eric Matern of Matern Construction, he is the the private public partnership. He is the construction company that will be building a office and commercial space in the former Y M C A. And Kevin Brown, who is the president of the Norwich Community Development Corporation, N C D six. And we're here today to answer any questions that you might have pertaining to the revolving loan program and the the emphasis on transferring certain funds from the revolving program via the Waterbury Cod to the city of Norwich to complete a environmental cleanup of the site. We are funded from the the state as far as the project. We're a successful grantee of the state grants on community programs. And I I think that our city Public Works Director, who I interrupted in the beginning, didn't introduce him. Who was the primary grant initiator, we just want to say a few words if he may. And I, before that, I do want to thank the mayor of Waterbury for working with me on placing this on the agenda. It is a fairly innovative way of doing things. We've worked with the E P A on this and it became a viable approach for us to get funding. So thank the mayor and thank you committee of the revolving loan front for considering this. So Mr. McLaughlin, if you'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for allowing us to be here and present our project, our, the redevelopment of the Y M C A is approximately a four point two million dollar project. The city just came in ownership of the property approximately a year ago. It's been vacant for about fifteen years with, but the ownership was still with the Y M C A. So by trans by the city becoming owners of the property, it opened us up to the redevelopment of the property. And we put out a request for proposals last fall and Mattern Construction wants to renovate the building and move their offices space into the building as well as create some other retail space in the in the building. And so that's why we went and pursued the challenge grant and were awarded two million dollars from the challenge grant for the project. Now we're just trying to, we had hoped we had applied for a a D C D grant and a E P A Brownfields grant to help with the cleanup costs, but we were not successful in obtaining either one of those grants. So now we're, we're still looking to try to plug holes in the budget and and develop this site successfully. The estimated remediation cost is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's mostly building materials. It's lead paint and asbestos that are in the building just because of the timeframe of when it was constructed. But now we need to get those things cleaned up in the building back on the tax rolls. So that's, and I don't know if Eric wants to add anything about, you know, Mattern's vision for the building because they'll be the owner, they they're going to be renovating it and they're going to be occupying it.
Thanks, Pat. Yep, this is Eric Mattern, Vice President of Madder Construction. And then to my left, if you can all see on camera is Lucas Gerard, our Director of Business Development. So two of us have been spearheading the effort here along with the the city. I jotted down a few notes just to give everybody a feel for what we envisioned for the project. And thank you, of course, for taking the time to hear us out. So a few big factors here. One is the project is going to be very environmentally focused. Aside from the immediate environmental cleanup, we intend to take a sustainable approach to the redevelopment. You know, this includes us not completely demolishing all structures on the property. Alternative plans looked at completely raising all the buildings. We feel that keeping those buildings out of the landfills and performing adaptive reuse is the best approach for us, for the community and for the environment. We plan to engage energy consultants and the public utilities to maximize the efficiency of the redeveloped buildings. That includes energy efficient M V P systems, use of recycled materials, heavy insulation, being as environmentally focused as we can in the rebuild. And then the site itself, the site itself supports access to public transportation. Our plan is going to include proposed E V charging stations on site for the businesses, the office occupants and the community as well. And it's really working with the city on creating a walkable environment, a walkable destination for the community and visitors. We throughout, you know, the construction process and development and beyond, look to support creation of local jobs and sustained jobs. Our interest goes beyond just being a developer. As as Pat mentioned, we want to develop the property, but also move our headquarters there as a, you know, representation of our vested interest in the long term turnaround of this property and the improvements in the city of Norwich. So we're bringing, you know, support for our forty plus employees as well as potential for eight to ten other businesses in the redeveloped spaces. And also looking at mixed use opportunity for some residential units on site as well. And finally, you know, we feel it's a very important project for the community and for the revitalization of Norwich. This site is located at the corner of Burnham Square, if anybody's familiar with that area, but it's basically the eastern gateway to Main Street and to the city of Norwich. We expect that this project is going to serve as a catalyst to additional redevelopment down Main Street through the city. And we feel very strongly that that energy is going to be contagious for anybody else looking to do similar projects on distressed sites. And, you know, finally, we think this is a great opportunity to show how a public private partnership can shine and improve a blighted site on the city and once again inspire others to potentially do the same. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. First, thank you, John Salomon. And thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. For your comments. Ricardo is here and he's handling this for N B C. Ricardo, do we have any questions remaining?
No, they they provided a lot of information to get a pretty general concept of the project itself. If board has any questions during the executive session, I'll be more than willing to answer all of them pretty good.
Okay.
Yeah, just just to know. So this application, we actually can't fund today. This would be out of the money that we were awarded that won't be available until October from the federal government, if the board decides to make a decision. And just so so everyone's clear, we're, we're going to conduct a review and discussion in in privileged session as as we do for revolving loan fund projects. The we, the board may or may not make a decision today. After after we have a discussion, they could approve, they could deny, they can table, request additional information. Those are, those are the options or take no action. So we're going to, we have two that we're going to review, just to clarify for everyone before we do the financial report. The first one Waters Way is an application you've already approved previously pending underwriting. So we're getting the underwriting report today and then you can make your decision around. And then the second one is this application from Norwich that we've received that we would consider for the next of money. If it meets all of all of our criteria, but I don't think we have any technical questions. We have all the information we do present to the board.
Yes.
If the board has additional questions after today, we can continue the process.
Okay. Is John, are you still on the call, John Salomo?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Oh, there you go. Okay. And so are you aware of the fact, John, that the, you know, the money will be, if if the board approves, the money won't be available until after October, you're probably aware of that, correct?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Thank you.
Want to make sure. Okay, so we'll call you guys. I guess we have to go on executive session for that, Rick.
Yeah, we're going to do the, we're going to do the approval of minutes, the finance report, and then then we'll go into executive sessions.
Okay, so you want to leave it that we'll call John after the, after that?
Yeah, no, we'll definitely be following up.
We'll call you later, John. Okay?
Hey, thank you, Mayor, for your time and hearing from staff in the city. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no, these guys done a great job here and we appreciate it as well. It's a little out of the box thinking, but you know, seems like it's well, I don't want to say too much before we discuss an executive session. So we'll, we'll, we'll definitely bring you up later. Thank you. And thank you, the rest of the Norwich staff and Mr. Mohern and Mr. McLaughlin. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okie dokie. Item agenda two, approval of the minutes from the March third two thousand twenty one meeting.
So move this presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item agenda number three, finance report. Thank you.
This first report is the master funding list, our funding breakdown for all of our E P A grants that the R L F committee controls. The first one in orange is the new grant that Rick mentioned. We just got paperwork for it and we'll have access to those funds October first, twenty twenty two. Was important to know, it is a fifty fifty split between loans and grants. Where in the past we've got an exception for forty sixty split, we'll give loan forty percent, right, sixty? But there is no match required, no twenty percent match required. The next one is the I L F twenty twenty and the program income, which I have broken down into more detail of the next two slides. Give me what I will. Thank you. So this is the I L F twenty twenty detail report. Currently, we have an available balance of two hundred and two hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, which is available for loans pending the approval of the underwriting report for Waters Way. Other than that, all the grant funds have been fully committed.
Right. So so the two hundred and eighteen thousand is available right now for loan or loan only.
Next slide please. This is the program income report from the R L F two thousand five grant. Currently, we have forty three thousand, seven hundred eighty three dollars available for loans, grants or general oversight. And currently it grows at about three thousand dollars a month.
So this, this goes back to the beginning of time in terms of program income for for the revolving loan front program. Even though each program is by year, all the program income is in one account. So when you see the program income number on top, seven hundred forty two thousand, that's that's back to the beginning of time.
And this is its cash basis too. So this book, the current available.
So for clarity, is this forty three and change? In addition to what we, what was previously stated, what was it, two one?
Two eighteen.
Yeah, correct. In addition to.
This to the two eighteen separate.
Okay, cool.
And that's at the, at the as of June thirtieth. So technically, right now, we have an additional six thousand.
Very good.
So as Michael said, it's on a cash, the report's on a cash basis. We have other loans out there that will be coming back to us as a lump sum repayment of the deal we did in Sullington.
How's that deal going?
Pretty good. Pretty good. Yeah, they're all complete with the ninety five percent complete with their remediation.
Ninety eight right now, and yeah, they're about to wrap up. The developer has two owners for two separate slot, slot, slot. Some of it's labs.
We got it.
Celebrity is Brownfield. Oh, yeah, he's interviewed by E P A. He's gonna, he's gonna be on their public materials. They, they had him in the corner for for quite a while.
I didn't see you out there.
I didn't see you there either.
Hundred and ninety degrees. You're certainly seeing me.
Actually, the days right was it was fine.
Yeah, you should. Yeah, it was. Go to that steakhouse.
There's a whole bunch of houses out there.
All right.
All right. So if we're ready to move on to the
Includes the financial report.
So there any questions?
Anybody have any questions about the finance report? Okay, we have a motion on the table. To approve.
If so needed, motion will approve. Thank you, sir.
About a second, boys. Second, how about, how about some discussion? Any discussion on the, on our hybrid virtual folks? On the finance report as presented? Okay. There are none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four, loan committee business.
So this is executive session. So the motion we would be looking for, Mr. Mayor, would be to enter executive session inviting Earl Randall from Capital for Change along with N B C Brownfield staff.
So moved.
Okay, discussion, all those in favor? Executive session we go into.
Okay, so Richard, you're gonna, you put everyone in the waiting room with loans there?
Correct. Basically.
And we'll just know for the record, it's eleven twenty six A M.
Okay, so we're out of executive session.
You want to be safe, come out of executive session.
Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. That's okay.
I can state the motion for the board.
Yes, please.
Okay, so in the matter of the application from Waters Way, what's the, I'm sorry.
Sir.
The application, the board, the motion from the board would be to approve the loan twenty four months at zero percent interest contingent upon the borrower submitting a current appraisal. We take a first position on the property and personal guarantees from the principals.
So moved second. So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, beautiful.
Okay, on the matter of the town of Norwich application, we've discussed the matter. We need more, the staff needs additional information.
On board to table.
To make a.
Any discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Beautiful. Any other business?
Nope. The next part of the agenda is just basically a program update.
Well, we don't need to do that. That's what I don't think. You just announce, just, just tell them when you're going to start the solitation.
Solicitation's live.
Okay.
And is actually.
And when, when, when are they going to be doing, concerned?
They're already, it, it probably is closed already. Yeah.
Okay, well, solicitations are out and closed already?
Yeah, but it's, it's something that we have a, a open cycle kind of thing. We have this for more formal things. Waterbury submitted, application Derby submitted, Newtown, Torrington. So we have like.
And Sheldon submitted something.
So what do I have to do is submit? I'll talk to Paul. I'll, I'll get Paul to submit an application.
Paul's not, he's not in the loop on this one.
No.
No, not yet anyway.
So I'll send you an email with the actual application and.
All right. Yeah, send it to me directly.
Yeah, my problem.
So, so, but we're not going to look at these, consider them until when?
Somewhere closer to October.
Right, so I, I would say after October 1, we'll, we'll come back to, to the board with additional information on Norwich hopefully. And then whatever other applications come in for that same cycle. And then we'll, we'll have staff recommendations for you there.
Very good. All right.
Everybody, okay?
Mayor, Mayor Hess, are you at your office? I have a resolution I need signed.
I am. Come right now. I'm here.
Okay, I have, I have a second.
I thought you were San Francisco.
I have a second copy to be, it could be signed by the chairman. So I'll do that.
You want me to sign it, Pete?
Sure.
This is from the original meeting, just as we, we pass that resolutions for the state funding.
Okay.
Thank you. And then. Okay, good. I, I, I think we're good. You can just.
Okay. My turn. Thank you, everybody. Pete, you good?
All good.
All right.